Welcome to the San Fernando City Council Special Meeting on February the 11th, 2025. The meeting has been called to order.
Councilmember Edwards, yeah? Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rupa Ladita?
Here, thank you. Next, in three, closed session. City Council will be going into closed session. This is conference of labor negotiations. They can just designate representatives of the city manager as regards to the employee organizations of the Teamsters 856, miscellaneous fire, police, public safety, and management, Teamsters Local 350, and management, and San Fernando Management Employee Association, and unrepresented employees. With that, we will then cut back. If there's any report of action, then we'll adjourn that meeting and then adjourn that to the regular city council. City Council is now in closed session.
Thank you.
The San Bruno City Council has come out of closed session. There is no reportable action at this time, and therefore we will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting to the next regular council meeting which will be held on February 11th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., which leads us to calling the San Bruno City Council regular meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harry Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rica Medina?
Here. If those who are able would please rise and join me in the council in question.
I'd like to give this to a lot of that states where in 230 dollars, it's a race. It is like just.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item four, public comments that are not on each city card.
I have two speaker cards, Chris, followed by Isen.
Please.
Good evening. Sorry, it's not on our paper, Chris, but. Right. I just want to bring it up to the city once more and on the diamond ring, the lighting problems that we have in the back of the walking path, not the diamond where they play baseball, but on the backside. It's pitch black. There's one light that stays on, maybe ten percent out of the rest of the percentage of the hundred percent that should be on. There's about two or three that are out, completely out, provided to the attention of the city throughout different departments. Maybe eight months ago, throughout phone calls in different departments, and then I just rang the bell to a couple people in the city council, to the villagers, and we worry that parents do have kids, they have daughters, they have seniors that walk back there. Bad things happen when it starts, trips involve us, and furthermore, it is addressed. And if anything does happen, it's out there, and I hope it gets rectified so we don't have to stall over again. I wonder why it takes so long, eight to nine months, to fix two or three lights, especially in a park that's getting busier and busier and busier. It's dangerous to be rectified and immediately forward, is it? But it's getting a little tiring, you know, talking about it. If you walk outside and you're going to a meeting, take a look back there. It's unacceptable, to say the least, and it's not about me. It's about your kids, your daughters, your fathers, brothers, seniors. It's a busy area and stages. So I hope we can fix it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council and community. I'm Isen and I wanted to bring to your attention from the time that I was here, I was able to witness the oath sworn by the three elected members of our city council, and I wanted to raise a point for the attention of our fellow residents of San Bruno that it was really wonderful hearing all of your speeches. It felt really genuine and heartfelt, but I know that when Mayor Rico was saying that he was grateful to his friend, Vice Mayor at the time, Michael Salazar, for being there to support me while your mother was not well at the hospital that day, anyone on the city council would have supported you similarly, in my minded style. I know that this city council before me cares about our community, and so when the last vote that happened occurred the way that it did, many people in downtown were upset and shocked quite frankly, and I was disappointed myself that things didn't go in favor of free parking on Sunday, but I wanted to remind the fellow neighbors and community of San Bruno that when we're looking at the broader big picture of what the future has for San Bruno, perhaps someone had convinced council member Hamilton to vote the way he did, and this will perhaps be something more than a loss of the reprieve that downtown was hoping for. It could be something that is very beneficial down the road five, 10 years from now. Also, when Mayor Rico Medina doesn't allow an ad hoc committee, there's no subcommittee, that means that the will and the voice and the opinion and the input of all of the community is only up to the five of you. Saying no to an ad hoc community means that you don't want the input of other members of our community. Councilmember Sandy Alvarez, you are up for election in 2026. I hope that another leader will rise to the occasion and run against you, but if you're unopposed, I hope that while you're tenure, it continues to be on the city council, that you will make it a priority to fix Bel Air Elementary School with those windows, as I believe perhaps you're still the liaison with SFO Airport, and that you will get those school boards eventually fixed, along with the lights that the gentleman before me was referring to. I know that there are growing pains happening right now in downtown, but I want to urge and compel my fellow community members to support our downtown, because while it hurts now, change is inevitable and we must embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and just for procedural, the ad hoc committee suggestion that brought up, it takes three members, and it was decided at that time by a majority to let the process go faster, because that would have had to come at the next meeting in order to agendize it, in order to appoint it, and then it would begin. And an ad hoc committee does not have an open public forum. An ad hoc committee is just the delegated subcommittee or the delegated ad hoc committee of two council members and a set staff. So I just want to clarify that, because that wouldn't, it wouldn't have allowed the community to input it at that. With that, I want to thank both for their comments, and I appreciate it. As much as I've known the council, I think everyone has a heart, and I think support one another when there's time of need, and I also believe the council members here make their own decisions and are certainly not persuaded that would make them go another way if they felt in an opposite direction. With that, let's move on to announcements and presentations, and we have a very nice and important one, and this is item A. Presentation of a community grant check to the San Bruno City Council for the library's summer reading program from the San Bruno Community Foundation. I'll turn it over to its president. Please.
City council members and others and other officials that are here this evening. My name is Melissa Nivana Cholston, and I have the pleasure of serving as the president of the San Bruno Community Foundation. The San Bruno Community Foundation was established by the San Bruno City Council to manage the 70 million in restitution funds received from PG&E as part of the settlement from the 2010 gas pipeline explosion. Our mission is to ensure these funds create a lasting positive impact on our community. To achieve this mission, the foundation launched the Community Grants Fund, which distributes a portion of the restitution funds to local organizations that directly benefit San Bruno residents. The organizations play vital role in enhancing the community's quality of life and supporting meaningful improvements. and supporting meaningful improvements. The city of San Bruno applied for a community grant last fall and was selected from a competitive pool of applications submitted by the September eighteen twenty twenty four deadline. A volunteer review panel, composed of San Bruno community members and individuals experienced in grant making and nonprofit work, carefully evaluated each application. After thorough deliberation, the panel recommended funding twenty nine programs. On December fourth, twenty twenty four, the San Bruno Community Foundation Board approved these grants totaling three hundred thousand dollars in funding. We are proud to continue our partnership with YouTube, Google dot org on the Community Grants Fund. This marks the eighth year they have generously contributed one hundred thousand for the total grant distribution. On behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation, I'm honored to present the city of San Bruno with a grant shed for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in support of the San Bruno Library Summer Reading Program. We applaud the city of San Bruno's efforts, and we are excited to support their important work to promote reading and early literacy while they're seen to prevent the summer slide, the summer slide, excuse me, where students lose some of the literacy gains they achieved during the previous school year over the summer break through the San Bruno Library Summer Reading Program. Again, it is our pleasure to continue to support the initiatives that are important to the city of San Bruno, and congratulations on this grant.
We want to thank you, the city council, the city. I want to thank you. And I was given some notes. The research shows that children do not read during the summer break, lose valuable reading skills, putting them and their peers who continue reading at a disadvantage and a loss. They call it the summer slide. It is especially pronounced amongst low income children, may have limited access to enriching summer programs such. The San Bruno's Summer Reading Program is designed to combat the summer slide by engaging children in a variety of educational and creative activities. These include craft making, story times in English and Spanish, and live performances, which have been held at the library and community locations like Bel Air School, Florida Park, and City Park. The program motivates children to read throughout the summer by allowing them to log with their reading hours. Those who complete the program receive a free book and a chance to win a one thousand dollar college scholarship. In addition to fostering love of reading, the program also engages teen volunteers. In twenty twenty four, ten teen volunteers dedicated two hundred and forty hours to supporting library summer events, building leadership skills while giving back to their community. So on behalf of the city, I can tell you, this grant that has been given is well worth it, serves a purpose, builds a future, and will carry on way after the summer into their next educational opportunities. That, we come over, and I'm Tim. Mr. Paulus, may I ask you to join me, right? CFO.
Well. She is. Thank you. I have just one.
If I may, through the mayor, just present this check to the city manager, Alex.
Alex? There's not many times Alex gets a check at a city council meeting. We'll move on to item six, consent counter. All items are considered routine or implemented in an earlier council action, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on this request. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests a roll for a separate vote. Any council members for a separate vote? Seeing none? Any council members that have wanted to make a comment? I know questions are submitted, received back, but there might be comments that we can make to make.
Yes. Through the mayor, item F.
F and H. Anything else from any? Okay, first, let's go on to, or start with that. Consider it adopting fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, city council priorities and budget principles. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you. So I did, I did ask this question and get the, and get the answer over. Email that I could ask it anyway during the meeting, because I didn't set a forecourt. In the, in this, the staff report comprising the, our priorities, budget principles, the, it was mentioned that attention use of measure G funds going into its next budget cycle, next fiscal year, and to ask the question, will, and that's going to be presented to the measure G committee very soon. So my question was, will the presentation to the measure G committee about potential use of measure G funds for strategic initiatives? We clear an estimate of all revenues from other sources. We expect to allocate the streets in fiscal year twenty six. And I want to clear that I know item number one is, is budget principles themselves, not by the recommendation, not a fund and everything. But because all these things are moving at once, I just wanted to make sure that we're addressing that with the measure G committee.
CFO. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Hamilton. Yes, correctly, we're meeting with the revenue measure oversight committee, or probably refer to as measure G committee on Thursday. As part of the presentation, we are communicating to the staff's recommendation for fiscal year twenty six budget, which includes funding for the city council initiatives, most notably the twenty million creative bright lights. In addition to that presentation, we'll also provide a overview of measure Q, which is, as I mentioned in my answer to the, to the checkered email, is a new funding mechanism that was previously unavailable until the person approved back in November, the one hundred two million dollars general obligation clause. At this time, the city council has not made a decision as to how to allocate the measure Q funds. However, those are up for consideration. We return to council on March eleventh for the CIP study session. And to your question, we will make that presentation to the project measure G committee. And of course, if there are any questions from the committee relative to other funding sources other than measure G and other than measure Q, I will provide that information.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, we have just one, one other quick comment on item F, and that is, this is one I can, you know, find. But I think I would like to see personally going forward that any, any of the items that we have that are related to the budget between now and when we adopt the budget at the end of June, where it will happen to be right, though, I am sad, because I think it's really important for to maintain as much transparency as possible and have discussions about each of these things. And even if the, even if like this particular item probably would have been a pretty short presentation, you know, detail, the highlights of the principles, and that's the end of it. So I thought for an enormous amount of extra staff work or anything, but I do think it would be best in my view to hold it really speed and rectify it. So.
It's common sense, and again, the, what we are considering is the priorities and the budget principles. Item H, receiving filing annual comprehensive financial report report on agreed upon procedures applied to appropriations on its schedule and other required outside agency reports this year ending thirty of twenty twenty four. Thank you, thank you. So once again, I do have, I do already have the answer, but I should think this is an important thing to, to discuss very briefly on your opening session. Because I get, I do get the question a lot. So what my question is, is can staff briefly explain why it was so important that we threw the city net debt and adopt new starting practice on the notice phase of charging interest to funds that are for the general fund, and any other major changes that were made to our current practices recently? Because I do get the question a lot about why we need to just continue with our former practice, and for example, not spend the benefit money to clear the state net debt, and just kind of let go. And I think it's important for people to understand how we can't really do that, and how we need to have strong fiscal policies, because those affect our debt ratings, limit our ability to achieve all our financials. CFO. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Councilmember Hamilton. There are three questions there, so I'll do my best to remember all of them as we're going through here. First and foremost, the city council has made great strides, I would argue, by adopting fiscal policies. We, as part of the last year's budget and in accordance with our budget principles, we did, the council did approve on staff's recommendation a comprehensive financial policy document. One of the policies that was included in there is our fund balance policy. The fund balance policy helps guide decisions that staff makes relative to reporting financial transactions to the year, but perhaps most importantly, at the end of the year. And you may recall that when I presented the, the policy, the fund balance policy to council, I highlighted that the city has had a practice of booking uniform loans between the general fund and the city. And so as we move forward through the, through the budget and fiscal year end process, or at least budget last year, the recommendation was that we make the general fund hold for monies that, for cash that was sent from the general fund to city net. That is, again, it protects the general fund. The monies that were transferred from the community benefit fund are being with the city. They just reside in the general fund now, as opposed to the, they're in the one-time revenue reserve. City council wants discretion to create this, this appropriate. With respect to the question about interest on loans from the general fund, this is a best practice for loans to enterprise funds. Effectively, what we're saying is that we're providing capital from the general funds, from the general taxpayers, to start a business type enterprise. And as part of that, the monies could either stay in the general fund and where the interest, which would then go back to general fund services, or the money goes into the partner fund and pays interest to the general fund as if we had, as if we had invested that money. The council has yet to take a formal action on adopting the interest policy, the interest payment policy. We do intend to bring that to you as part of an update fund balances, fund balance reserve policy as part of this year's budget. I hope I answered all of the questions. One final thing that I have. The actions taken by council over the past two years have shortened the city's finances in a way that best positions us coming into the bond market when we look to our money under measure, sorry, measure Q's authority. The underwriters should be looking very carefully at our finances during their reading and recognizing this, this is, this is, this is staying. Thank you very much. You're absolutely right. We're doing answer all our questions, and I really appreciate you, I indulge you with all my extra questions, CFO. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Sorry, I might start.
No problem. Thank you very much for asking for this, as I said, I think this is one of the most factors that the city puts out. This is the model of annual comprehensive financial report. Each year, we have an audit, and each year, there's an analysis whether we are, we handling our money in a good way. And once again, this year, we've got it passed the audit. So it's really, really important. The reasons could go online and take a look at it. It has more information there than probably did it reviews. But it does show where money goes. And you know, later, past two years, we, we had a study session about. Each city product gets a different, and this has been put on, said, I, I think similar to Councilman Hamilton's, I think a really short presentation, a few minutes, two slides, just to, just highlight the importance of this, showing much the trends that we're making, especially as we're entering budgets, especially very well. So I want to make sure.
And as was indicated, everybody can go online, read the staff reports. This was not a study session, but a, a presentation that would be made by the audit, auditors. What I think is also important to note is the whole methodology, it was not documented as far as the debt. That is a practice that then changed, that showed that interim was dead. And then that was, was noted and carried over. And that's why I also went forward to have it cleared, because when you have a negative, you've got to clear it. It's got to get back down the zero that's your cities operate. The other thing is, is the city council not only hires the city manager and city attorney, but this is another perspective. The auditor works for the council, not the manager, not the CFO, the ACM, but to us. They ask us and want to make sure, is there anything that you know? Have you seen, have you heard? And so we're questioned privately, so that we can give feedback to the auditors before they begin their process. Excuse me. So when we talk about that, that's not always encapsulated in a presentation, but I think it's good, since we're wanting to bring this topic up, that people also bear that. They don't handle the auditors, and we get the information. So it's very segregated, as it's supposed to be, to ensure it's, well, the results. So thank you. Is there anything else? Any public comment?
No, speaker first.
Go back to council for actions for consent, please. Motion by Hamilton, second by Arnie Medina, Vice Mayor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I reported as a five vote, passes unanimously. Item seven, conduct of business.
Considered intruders being reading by title only and waiving a further reading of in accordance with the, in accordance of the city council, the city of San Bruno, adopting by reference chapter four point nine eight of the San Antonio County ordinance code, tobacco retailer permit, repealing and replacing in its entirety San Bruno Municipal Code chapter six point five two, tobacco retailer permit in connection with such adoption, and finding the amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and set public hearing on adoption of organs versus, I apologize, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps the city council will come here, give you the opportunity. I was actually just saying, move the, try to move the zoom. And this was, at the top, this is an item for the tobacco retailer ordinance. For the agenda, we're going to go through the objective background discussion and recommendation as, as usual for these type of items. There's a public comment period, and then trainee for the council to ask questions. The objective tonight is for city council to take action regarding introducing an ordinance to adopt San Antonio County's tobacco retailer regulations by reference, and then setting a public hearing for the adoption. About around from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty two, city of San Bruno used the county health department tobacco retailer program, which covers licensing, renewals, inspections, and monitor, and enforcement of the county's tobacco retailer regulations. This is an indirect cause to the city. Perspective business would have an approval from the county for coming to the city to get a business license and all. Those businesses would have to renew their county approval on a can basis. Those businesses would have to renew their county approval on a can basis. In two thousand twenty two, the county placed a hold on the new permits and renewals to consider changes to the program. According to county data from two thousand twenty two. City of San Bruno had thirty-four tobacco retailers with state licenses. Which puts San Bruno as the fourth highest of all cities and towns with population over ten thousand in the county. With tobacco retailers per county. These were behind Hathley Bay, East Palo Alto and Redwood City. In two thousand twenty three, the board adopted revised regulations that were determining they were necessary to better protect public health within the county. Typically as it relates to prevent an under-rent access. Uh, shown on screen, many. County cities have adopted regulations and are using the county's program. And recently, uh, staff learned that San Francisco is going to have this on the council agenda next month. And staff is recommending that their council also adopt the county regulations. So there might be another added to this list. There are two main parts to the revised regulations. Uh, first are. Are, uh, that buffers are added, uh, around what the county calls youth populated areas, which are schools and parks. As well as buffering existing tobacco retailers. Uh, so to avoid over-concentration of the tobacco retailers as, as well as keeping the, these retailers away from. Youth following areas. For cities that join the county. The county regulations, no new license can be granted to a tobacco retailer in any of the counties. And regulations were also put in place. This applies to new and existing businesses. Um, there, there, uh, can be no sales of e-smoking devices, no tobacco sales of any kind, many products at, at pharmacies. And no sales of flavored tobacco. The county, uh, included hookah in their definition of flavored tobacco without any exemptions. Uh, and these, as I noted, these provisions apply to existing and new businesses, whereas the buffers only apply to new businesses. This is a map of the, uh, of retailers in the city, uh, that had licenses in two thousand twenty two. As, as you can see, there is a, a fairly high concentration along El Camino Real and San Mateo Avenue. The light orange shows the buffers around tobacco retailers. Uh, the light blue shows the buffers around the youth populated areas. There are very few commercial properties outside of these buffers, so adoption of the county regulations will effectively limit new tobacco retailers. As I noted, most existing businesses are within a buffer, either a youth populated buffer or, uh. Accessing to another tobacco retailer. But as long as they maintain their licenses, they will be able to continue to operate or continue to sell tobacco products, I would say. And as noted, the provisions apply to existing and new. And that means that the city adopts the county program, no local business can sell e-smoking devices, no local pharmacy can smoke. Sell tobacco products and no local business can sell flavored tobacco, including hookah. So if the city adopts the county program, Paradise Hookah Lounge, number twenty four, that's highlighted in yellow. Have to completely change their business or close. So in February of two thousand twenty four, city council considered introducing an ordinance to adopt the county's regulations. Several public speakers and the owners of Paradise Hookah Lounge, uh, attended this spoke as well. And they requested that the council not adopt the ordinance because of how that would affect their business. Many of the speakers supported stronger tobacco regulations to protect public health, uh, but did not want to see new regulations close existing business. City council comments indicated support for the county regulations in general, except for the result of an existing business having to close. Council tabled the item to allow further communication with the county. Staff sent a letter to the county in early March, asking for consideration of changes to the county program. For hookah. Council members reached out to members of the board, uh, requesting similar changes. And the county began to develop an amendment to their regulations. That would allow an existing hookah establishment that had maintained all of their permits and licenses to remain. Based on information we moved from the county. The county believed Paradise Hookah Lounge was the only business in the county that this would apply to. Prior to the expected board hearing, uh, in late two thousand twenty four. Our county staff informed the city that Paradise Hookah Lounge did not have an required state license. As a result, the county was not going to proceed with their commitment. Uh, county did inform the business owner who did quickly reapply for and received the state license. Since those laps, this is what would no longer qualify for prospective amendment that the county is looking into. So that leaves the city with, with three options, each with, with key, with key disadvantages. First, the council could elect to have no tobacco retailer regulations at all. Uh, this has, has the advantage that, uh, the government could remain in business, but has a negative impact. Public health in the community because there would be no additional regulations on, on tobacco retailers beyond state requirements, which seem to be. Good. This will likely result in more tobacco retailers. And between, uh, in, in the last year, there have been prospective tobacco retailers that have approached staff asking about, uh, opening in the city. Next option is the city could adopt the county regulations. This approach has many advantages. Uh, the community would receive public health benefits, county program. Uh, and no additional cost to the city, and there would be no additional impact on staff time working on other city council programs. The disadvantage is that, uh, Paradise Hookah Lounge would have to change their business or to close. Uh, the third option is the council could direct staff to create a local program. Under the assumption that a local program could allow existing hookah to remain. As, uh, as it appears that that is the only concern the city has with the county program. This approach, uh, has benefit or has advantage that the lounge could continue. But there are disadvantages in that expected cost to administer such a program. The staff and overhead, administrative overhead costs likely be about, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And this would increase each year, uh, with, with, uh, increased costs of. Um, services that consumes, like, financial staffers with the straight up. For the department managing the program. We're trying to fully recover that cost would result in annual fees to the tobacco retailers of about eighty-five hundred dollars. Whereas, uh, which is far more than roughly one thousand dollars that the county charges. Uh, to have a fee closer to the county fee, the city would have to subsidize the program from general fund or some combination of the higher fee that the county charges and, and the general. Funds subsidy. There would also be the disadvantage that, uh, to set up a program, staff resources would have to be diverted from other city priorities to develop a local program. And even with, even a potential partnership with another community can have significant upfront and ongoing administrative costs. Uh, and with our finding an interesting partner, of which, uh, we are not aware of. Local program will also likely result in reduced public health benefits to the community as, uh, this is an area that the city does not have expertise in. But the county, county, the health department has more expertise. Uh, setting up a local program to duplicate, typically not considered a good use of public funds. Uh, particularly when the topic is an area that the city has no expertise. For no indication on these items, for the two thousand twenty four meeting, uh, thirty-four business owners who had the licenses in two thousand twenty two were notified. Including the owners of Paradise Hookah Lounge. Uh, the state notification was provided for this meeting. As typical for council agenda items, uh, we have a discussion of fiscal environment impacts. Because there are multiple options council might take, we try to summarize what fiscal environmental impact would be for each. Uh, to take no action would have no impact. Uh, to adopt county regulations would have a minimal fiscal impact, uh, and has been found to have no potential environmental impact. Uh, creating a local program, uh, there would be, uh, upfront and ongoing fiscal impact, uh, as. But likely no environmental impact as the term would likely be similar to what the county has in place and. We determined that the county. Second, uh, adopting an ordinance by reference, which is what is being proposed. Instead of duplicating the text of the county regulations, we are going to. If council chooses to, we would adopt the county regulations by reference. The process is slightly different. The, the differences are the, uh. Instead of the introduction, this meeting being a public hearing. The adoption here is, the adoption meeting is a public hearing. There's additional public notice required between the introduction and the adoption. Uh, there's actually two notices. As a result, uh, it's not possible for this item, if council wants to introduce the ordinance, it's not possible for the adoption to be on the twenty fifth. This month, uh, that would not be enough time to notice, so the adoption hearing would have to be on March eleventh. Starting all the factors involved, staff recommends city council introduce the ordinance as read by the city clerk. Except that we set the public hearing from March eleventh, twenty twenty five, to allow for the, kind of noticing of the adoption hearing. That concludes staff's presentation. Uh, we recommend taking public comment if there is any, uh, after which staff can answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Are there any members of the public? Um, and, and if you haven't turned in a slip, but wish to speak, please just raise your hand and that's okay too. Uh, please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you. Always running late with my kids. Hello. Great. So from what I gather, from what I came in, does it seem like you guys have made a decision? Is no, are we still?
The citizens and main staff just gave their presentation and report and representation.
Okay. Is there any way this is meeting? It's just kind of hard for us to like, understand where this is going. It just feels like from last year, from what we met till now, seems like we're kind of at the same spot. Um, has anything changed from last year or is it? Are we still deciding? Like, just, just to know what's coming in this next, the next meeting that you guys are setting up on the eleventh now? Just, uh, that's, that's the only question that I have.
We go. Was there any other questions you had?
No, I, I think that's it. I mean, there was one other thing that I spoke to Christie about the other day. It was about the, um. Uh, the health, the health permit. She said that they had looked into our accounts or whatever and said that we didn't have one, but. I think, I, I don't know if it's public knowledge, but they haven't handed those out since the pandemic. So that's why, because she was like saying that there was. There was a want to grandfather us in, in whatever direction that you guys are heading, which is great, you know, we love that. But she was like, oh, you don't have the health code thing, but we can't get, they're not getting them out at this. If it comes down to something like that, I just wanted to make it clear that. We can't get, you know, just since they propose, they propose this ordinance, they haven't given them out. So, but other than that, that's, that's all I have.
No problem. We'll get those, uh, questions you have addressed. And then once, uh, the public has concluded, we'll get some answers and then we'll come to council and we haven't even asked a question yet.
Sure.
Okay. You're very welcome. Are there any other members of the public? Seen and hearing none? Do I, do I need to close? I don't need to close. Okay, so that's for next. So I will assume at this point that there is no members of the public that wish to speak, so let's bring it back to city council for questions, please. Colleagues. Well, that's right. Thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, questions? Let's go to comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank, uh, as help. Politics to the issue we're going to. It's, it's, um, so, thank you. Just for, I'm so proud of you, because we want to make sure everyone is on the same page. The, the, the three options are basically the same as last year. The difference is, uh, the city did go through the process of attempting to get the county to amend the regulations. The, the license that the county says that was not the county license, but the state license. Uh, speaker is correct. In two thousand twenty two, the county stopped doing this. Uh, they're, they, they, they based, uh. The county's determination of whether or not, uh, businesses had maintained their licenses on the state assets. Uh, which is requiring respect and the county, so, uh, hopefully that's answered the question.
Yeah, thank you for the process. Councilor Hammer.
So I just wanted to, a lot of what I'm gonna say, this, uh, simplifying what we just heard in the. In the South, I'm gonna add a little more words because I've been involved with this quite a bit, um, over the past year. So a year ago, as, as was, as Peter just said, we were presented with these three options. Uh, the top county regulations, creating a local program at a considerable expense or just not. Um, that last option's never been changed. But. See, dragons. So we looked at the other two options, I was going with the county and the correct program. And as was stated in the staff report, there was, uh, there's. Some accounting regulation, but having, uh, closing. One business here, so I brought up, was there a way to get it? A point that I ran low reason that was this. So I took it upon myself to, when staff sent that question, apparently I took it upon myself to reach out to. Uh, two different members of the board supervisors. Because I couldn't, I'm afraid that's right. And to. Understand, gauge, gauge the, the supervisors, uh. Willingness to support the. Yes, you know, have their, have their schedule back. The county attorney, what county? And there was. We reminded that the business in question, as was presented to us in the meeting, uh, everywhere. Had been following all the rules, because that was the, that was the big thing for me, that really struck me is that following all the rules, trying to do our business can, uh, uh, party. Which we actually, we don't. Step with, with. With the, this kind of. Individual supervisor, supervisor, staff, and with the county attorneys. Found that forward and we got all the way ahead. And again, ready to bring this, uh, bring this forward, forward, providing for a vote. And then they discovered that Paris didn't have the state license for to sell tobacco, which is like the basic thing. And then killed it. And I'm still supporting and totally. And pardon? To try and get, to try to, to get, to get this to the whole place. And I, I can, I understand that, that, that amendment is out in place, but it's too late. And I'm sorry about that, but, uh. Trying to understand and would face with the, the other option of. The year that either everyone's in, really needs to pay. Or we spring it down to all the. Retailers which would raise their, their fee from thousands to over eighty-five hundred. It's the engineer's, this is the policy, so. I just wanted to make sure that. A lot of it's transparent, or transparent as possible as to what is going on this year that has brought us to, to this point. So that's it. Thank you.
We have, uh, we're in a comment period. Any comments from colleagues?
Ten chambers older.
I, I, I appreciate, uh, council member's efforts. That's the, uh, the direction that we recommended at the last meeting and, uh, we really hope that we can find a resolution. We definitely don't want to put anybody out of business, but I think, uh, we have enough options at this point, so, uh. Yeah, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, we have too many, too many other opportunities and we did, we did make an effort to do. You know, appreciation to staff and to the council member Hamilton together.
Any other comments? If not, this is an action item. Is there any action right in the body? There are. Right in the city clerk and having the March eleventh, their appearing date. Is that immune? Okay, motion made in second. Let's see clerk, then you can get that with Marshall, addition and motioner and the second are okay. Marshall, with that, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Bye all. And thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments. With that, let's move on to item eight, please. It's council committee report outs. Remember any? Seeing hearing none. Let's move to item nine. Comments from council members. That, we're going to send the journey to the next regular city council meeting, which we held February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Meeting is adjourned.